Good evening, everybody. It's 6 o'clock. We'll get this council meeting going, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could all please stand. We'll be led by Councilmember Klein.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could please remain standing for an invocation by Malcolm McHale.
Thank you. In thinking about what I wanted to share with you tonight, there's a, in relation to all of our, what our country's been through the last several weeks and years, actually, and when it comes to relationships, when it comes to politics, when it comes to anything relational, there's a first-century verse of Scripture that comes out of the Bible, and it's this phrase: "Be quick to listen, slow to speak, and slow to get angry." I think that would be a great recipe for our nation and our world at this time. So with that, let us pray. Lord, thank you for our city council members. Thank you for their service. Thank you for all that they do in our community. Pray a blessing on them. I pray you'll give them wisdom tonight. I pray you'll give them knowledge in their decision-making, Lord. And I also pray for all of our first responders, Lord, both on police and fireside, that, Lord, you would be with them while they're on their shift, and that you would bring them all safely home from their watch. Also, be with our city, keep it safe, and we thank you for all that you're doing. We ask in your name. Amen. Thank you.
All right. City Clerks report on posting the agenda, and we'll call.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The agenda was posted on Friday, November 15th, at 10:55 a.m. Councilmember Bracco?
Here.
Councilmember Armandares?
Here.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
Mayor Blankley?
Here. Thank you. Under orders of the day, we have none. Under employee introductions, we have some. Fire Department. Arlen, you're going to introduce three, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. It's my honor and privilege to be able to introduce three of our newer hirers for Gilroy Fire Department. First one I want to introduce is Dawson Whistler. And then with all three, they were all in the same Joint Fire Academy, which actually started on April 1st through about August 2nd. So they've actually been with us for a little bit, did their field training altogether around the same time, and been on probation for about the three months, the last three months. So we're just kind of getting caught up on the introductions here. So first is Dawson Whistler. Dawson is 24 years old and was born and raised in Turtleock. He is the oldest of three with two younger sisters, and he was fortunate to grow up around the fire service. He is proud to be a second-generation firefighter. He has nearly six years of experience working as an EMT and paramedic for various ambulance services, most of his time in San Benito County. On his off days from work, he enjoys spending time with his girlfriend, family, and friends. He likes to get outdoors a lot, and has many hobbies such as hiking, fishing, camping, riding his dirt bike, and skiing. Please welcome Dawson Whistler.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be here today, to get to meet everyone, and for the opportunity to get to serve the citizens of Gilroy. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Next, we'll do Jordan Daniels. Jordan is 31 years old and was born and raised in Fremont. He now lives in Manteca with his wife, toddler, son, and a dog. Prior to working for Gilroy Fire Department, he'd spent the previous seven years working on the ambulance in Alameda County, primarily serving the residents of Oakland. Jordan was drawn to the Gilroy Fire Department for its strong and progressive paramedic program, diverse community, and family-oriented atmosphere. On his off days, Jordan loved spending time with his family, cooking outdoors, traveling, and watching basketball. Please welcome Jordan Daniels.
Just wanted to say thank you. I'm eternally grateful for this opportunity to serve the residents of Gilroy, California, and I look forward to learning and growing here. Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, we'll introduce Jared Cook. Jared is 26 and was born and raised in Salinas. He has been passionate about pursuing a career in the fire service since he was 15. His former wrestling coaches, who were also members of a nearby fire department, spurred him toward the fire service. With the unwavering support of his family, friends, and girlfriend for over the last seven years, he worked hard to make this dream a reality. Before the fire service, he worked on an ambulance for several years. Outside of work, he enjoys staying active through judo and weightlifting. He also spends time working on cars as a hobby. He loves relaxing with a good movie or TV series, and when not in the gym, or when not in the gym, he's in the garage.
Nice to meet y'all. Really glad to be here, and I'm looking forward to having a lifelong career in the city of Gilroy and to serve the community here.
You're welcome. Thank you all. Moving on to ceremonial items, we have none. Council correspondence, none. So presentations to the council, and we'll start with the annual presentation by the Personnel Commission. Chair Nita, Eddie Mitchell, will be giving us the presentation.
Thank you for having us here. We're excited to give you our update from this past year. I have two members of our team here. Marissa Harrow, who's our chairman for this year, and our vice chairperson is Catherine Cummins. I'll be chairman next year, and they didn't want to speak tonight, so you're stuck with me. We have Robin Bronze, who has agreed, oh, let me see, I gotta move this, who has agreed to stay on, although she's looking to get off of our team. So we're looking for commissioners. Please, if anybody's interested, we're a great group, and we do a lot for the city. We have a lot of fun interviewing people, and I think I've had the honor of interviewing all of those firemen, and I'm so proud of, I mean, they're amazing young men, so they made some great decisions there. And we have one vacant position, so we're hoping to get that filled. So if you guys have any friends, please send them our way. The role of our commission is governed by Section 907 of the city charter, and it says that we'll have a Personnel Commission of five members, none of whom, while a member of the commission for a period of one year after he or she has ceased for any reason to be a member, can be eligible for appointment to any salaried position for the service of the city. And we have the power and duty to act in an advisory capacity only to the city council, city administrator, and/or the human resources director in the preparation, installation, revision, and maintenance of a full-time employee position classification plan, and the Human Resources Rules and Regulations. We hear appeals of any officer or employee having a full-time status in any office, position, or employment in the competitive service pertaining to suspension, demotion, dismissal, or disciplinary action as provided in the Human Resources Rules and Regulations or Memorandums of Understanding. And we perform other duties to personnel matters as prescribed by the council, not inconsistent with the provisions of the charter. Like I say, one of the main roles we play is participating in interviews for all the staff as community members, so keeps us busy. We have reviewed and provide input and approved three existing job descriptions, nine new job descriptions, most of them for the new utilities department, four employee reclassifications, and 11 salary range adjustments and establishments. Prior to our review, the union always completes and reviews our, all the proposals, so we have all their feedback before we give our recommendations. So our recruitment stats look as follows, thanks to our great HR department. 60 recruitment processes, 1,472 employment applications, which is huge, 57 new hires, 35 are part-time, 22, I mean, 35 are full-time, 22 are part-time. We had 18 promotions, and then again, our hiring process is assisted by us in the interview This year, we've had lots of training in best practices for HR rules and regulations, best practices for classification and compensation, the Gilroy Open Government Ordinance, employment law, administrative hearing procedures. We reviewed again every year harassment, discrimination, and retaliation prevention, and reviewed the Board and Commission handbook. We didn't have any grievance or discipline appeal hearings this year, and we're looking forward to this year in reviewing the updating of Gilroy Human Resources Rules and Regulations. So that'll be a huge job for us this year. And, Toot Sweet, shorten. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Nita. Any questions from anyone on the council? Excellent presentation. Thank you all for your service. We really, really do value our commissioners. Okay, next is the presentation by, for Planning Commission, and that's going to be Manny Bandell.
Good evening, council, Madam Mayor. My name is Manny Bandell. On behalf of the Planning Commission, I'm here to give you an overview of our last 12 months and kind of a sneak peek into what's coming for the following years. The Planning Commission is a seven-member body which acts as the advisory body to the city council in the review of planning applications for land use entitlements, including subdivisions, planned unit developments, zone changes, conditional use permits, and variances from the city's development standards, comprehensive planning studies, and zoning code. The Planning Commission meets monthly on the first Thursday at 6:00 p.m. in city council chambers, and more frequently as needed. Commission members, there's myself, Manny Bandell's chair, Anadore Kushner, vice chair, Stephanie Ellie, Adriana Leongard, Joan Lewis, Kelly Ramirez, and Monica Valdez. I'd also like to mention Terrence Fugazi. He had about a year on the Planning Commission in 2023. Commissioners serve a four-year term. A quick overview of some of the projects, and I am going to go into detail into a few of them here, was the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which we passed on to city council, conditional use permits, architectural site review for a self-storage facility, a historic plaque monument for Highway 152, tentative map for three Glen Loma Ranch specific land neighborhoods, zoning tax amendments that were implemented in the 2023 to 2031 housing element, Miller Red Barn presentation we received from them, and zoning ordinance updates, which is ongoing. We received an introduction earlier midway through the year, and as the year goes on for 2024, we will have more training into the zoning ordinance updates. The first project to your attention here is a self-storage facility, Gilman Road. It's 57,000 square feet, partially temp-controlled. This is near the Costco, if you're not familiar where this location is. We reviewed a conditional use permit as well as the arc and site review. This project also encompassed a, two wall murals designed by a local artist, both of them which are right there for you to preview. Next was the Highway 152 tree row plaque monument. This commemorates the historic significance of the row of the DODAR cedar trees planted in the 1930s. This was originally spearheaded by the Rotary Club of Gilroy, and I believe the majority of those trees still stand. I believe there are 75 of them. That was it on that one. Commission training and grant review processes. Meeting management training. We received an overview of various rules and procedures that apply to the Planning Commission meetings, including the Brown Act and Robert Rules of Order. A lot of this was a review for existing commissioners and new to new commissioners that joined in 2024. Legislative training and overview of major local and state laws. As you know, every year, the state imposes new updated rules and regulations upon cities, and it's important that we review those and train commissioners accordingly. We received a Planning Commissioners Training Academy. I believe it was in Long Beach, and it includes nuts and bolts of planning. It also reviews SEQA, ethics, state legislation, streamlined housing projects, local control, and public meetings. Another big item that we were trained on this year were the complete streets training. It considers the mobility of needs of all roadways, including vehicles, passengers, bikes, and buses. We received, we reviewed grant reviews, allocation for fiscal year 2025, Development Act Article III pedestrian bicycle project funding from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. We also received a grant review for two active transportation applications for a development of a bike and pad, ped action plan, and two multimodal improvements on Monterey Road within city limits. The complete streets training, as you can see here in the images, in contrast to a lot of the other training, this is very important. It takes and prioritizes movement of all people who use the street. Instead of, it changes rather than forgives behavior through design, designed for slower, safer speeds, and encourages walking, biking, rolling, and riding public transit. And there's an image there of what a complete streets would look like, and hopefully here in the near future, projects in Gilroy would encompass the complete streets. One of the grants we reviewed was a TD3 grant from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. It was $240,000 for citywide curb and ramp improvement, and there is a map there of all the ramps that we upgraded this year, or slated for the 2025 year for upgrade. Two other grants, 816, almost 817,000 for a bike and ped action plan. And this incorporates bicycles, pedestrians, and Americans with disabilities, first-last-mile transit connectivity, and assessment of the city's infrastructure and non-infrastructure needs. A big grant that we reviewed was a nearly $22 million Monterey Road multimodal improvements. And this project, the $22 million, definitely includes the complete streets that we'll see coming in the future. Upcoming activities for 2025, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to continue working on the zoning ordinance update. We're going to review a variety of land use projects that come through the pipeline, and as well as Planning Commission training, as you know, with state legislation, it is ongoing change. I'd like to thank our city staff, Sharon Goey, Ariana Fabian, Sydney McCormick, Erin Freitas, Mariah Maganda, for all the time and effort you guys put into it. I know a lot of the questions that the commissioners have are directed to them before the meetings, and they do an awesome job getting back to the commission with any of the questions that they have. I also wanted to thank Melissa Durkin and Craig Tamborini. They did both retire last December, and, or was it this December? No, last December. And I am open to questions.
Thank you, Manny. Council, any questions? Excellent presentation again. Thank you to all of our planning commissioners.
Thanks so much.
All right. Bye. Okay, that brings us to 4.3, which is time for members of the public to comment on anything not on the agenda. Beth, do we have anybody wishing to speak under this item?
We have one public speaker, Zachariah De La Rosa, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay. Oh, right here. Yeah. It's okay. There you go.
Okay. Firstly, I want to thank God for another beautiful day of life that was unpromised, and thank you, Madam Mayor, and council members and people of Gilroy for this opportunity to speak. We are well into the fall and the winter months. This evening, I would like to issue a call for goodwill to assist those without homes. There are plenty of organizations that have weekly supports and events planned throughout the coming months. That's great, and I'm glad to see people getting help. Tonight, I'm speaking for us to have that heart for all opportunities, whether you have an extra pair of gloves to hand out, or time slash money to purchase a meal for somebody, or even something as simple as a friendly hello or have a good day. We may not be able to change the world, but we can change the perspective of the world for those who are less fortunate. And that's pretty much all I got.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, seeing no others, closing public comment, and moving on to reports of council members. Councilmember Bracco?
Yes, I wanted to address some misinformation about a donation I made to an anti-tax political action committee called the Taxpayer, California Taxpayer Protection Committee. I received this copy from the Fair Political Practices Commission about a complaint that was made. Their response is from James Lindsay, the chief enforcement officer. This, Dear Mr., Dear William McGowan, this letter is in response to the sworn complaint you submitted to the Enforcement Division of the Fair Political Practices Commission regarding the above referenced matter. After careful review of the complaint and evidence provided, the Enforcement Division will not pursue any enforcement action in this matter, as the complaint failed to establish that a violation of the Political Reform Act has been, has occurred. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Armandares?
No report.
Councilmember Marks?
No report.
Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. From the Valley Transportation Authority Policy Advisory Committee, besides the FTA and VTA funding, a combined $1.125 million that will fuel a community-centered stationary plan focused on planning out the downtown area where the Gilroy Transit Center is located. The plan will prioritize multimodal transportation, pedestrian and bicycle access, and mixed-use development. The $750,000 Transit Oriented Communities Grant is focused on partnerships to support local public agencies and other stakeholders involved in the creation of transit-oriented communities. The grant will provide a key, key funding opportunity to support local public agencies, property owners, community organizations, and other diverse transit-oriented community stakeholders working to further transit-oriented communities along high-capacity transit corridors and stations in Santa Clara County. I'm happy to announce that our very own Carry the Vision was funded for community resilience, strengthening and increasing the ability to advance preservation or production of affordable housing, and the Gilroy Arts Alliance was funded for placemaking arts and activation placemaking, place-keeping to create accessible and welcoming public spaces that reflect and enhance vibrancy of the local community's history, culture, and identity. We also had an update on the equitable vehicle miles traveled mitigation program. California shifted from focusing on vehicle congestion level of service to the total amount of driving called VMT for transportation analysis under SEQA. The goal of the project is to develop the framework for an equitable program to reduce the amount of driving from land use developments in Santa Clara County that works across jurisdictional lines and improves transit options. The project is focusing on equity in both the process and the outcome. Since the project commenced in May of 2023, VTA has been working closely with its consultant team and project partner to document existing needs, VMT mitigation practices, coordinated with local jurisdiction staff, and community outreach by tabling at events. Lastly, the program grant, grant project aligns with VTA's business line of delivering projects and programs by developing the framework for a program that facilitates the funding and implementation of VMT-reducing strategies such as active transportation improvements, transit signal priority efforts, and transportation demand management measures. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
I have no report.
Councilmember Tovar?
I have no report tonight.
Okay, I just want to say thank you to all of our volunteers. We had the volunteer appreciation dinner last Thursday for all the volunteers of the city, mostly our commissioners, and some of us council members were there. It was a very nice event. Thank you to city staff who went through all the trouble to decorate and put it on. And again, thank you to everybody who steps up and volunteers in any capacity for your city. Okay, we move on to the consent calendar. We have a few, two, two items on consent. I'm going to ask for public comment first. Okay, then coming to council.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Armandares and seconded by Councilmember Tovar to approve the consent calendar.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes, that passes unanimously. All right, brings us to 7.1, under bids and proposals. This is to award a contract to Villalobos and Associates for the fiscal year 25 Annual CDBG Sidewalk Curb Ramp Project in the amount of $141,755, and approve a project contingency of $38,188.33, and a total project expenditure of $179,943.33 for construction. Daniel Padilla, give us the report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, residents. So this item is to award a contract to Villalobos and Associates for our fiscal year 25 Annual CDBG Sidewalk Curb Ramp Project. So the city receives CDBG funds from HUD. This project will construct 20 ADA-compliant curb ramps, and ramps will be constructed within low and moderate income neighborhoods, which is a requirement of the CDBG funding. So the curb ramps will be installed on Sherwood Drive. We'll have three of them there, five of them on Wellburn Avenue, and four on Cypress Court. And we are installing four on Parish Way and four on Hannah Street. So we advertised in the San Jose Mercury News and the city's website, open bids on October 16th. We received four bids, and the lowest responsible responsive bidder is Villalobos and Associates. Here you have the four bids. So Villalobos and Associates was the low bidder and well below our engineer's estimate, which is why, you know, we have a contingency of 27%, which is, you know, higher than normal. Total bid is $141,755, and total bid with the contingency is about $180,000. Again, this is funded with CDBG funds, and we've done some outreach, and the contractor will let residents know prior to, you know, starting construction. So staff is recommending that we award a contract in the amount of $141,755, approve the project contingency of about $38,000, and then the total project expenditure of about $180,000. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right, council members. I don't see anyone on the board. Anybody with questions? No? All right, public comment?
No public comment.
No public comment. Then if somebody would like to...
Move for approval?
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Tovar and seconded by Councilmember Armandares for, we have four different things, as the mover and the seconder of all four, which is awarding the contract, approving the contingency, approve the total amount, and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes, that passes unanimously. All right, 7.2, award a con, same entity. This one is in the amount of $356,100 with a contingency of 53, $356,100 with a contingency of $53,415 for a total project expenditure of $409,515 for construction, and adopt a resolution to amend the adopted budget by $169,515. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, a very similar project, just different funding sources and slightly larger project. Again, this is to award a contract to Villalobos and Associates for our fiscal year 25 Annual Citywide Curb Ramp Project. So this project is funded with TDA grant funds, gas tax funds, and vehicle registration fee funds. And this project will construct 51 ADA-compliant curb ramps, and this project will focus on installing curb ramps at locations where there are no ramps. And run through these curb ramp locations, we're installing three on Mantelli, six on Amanda Avenue, two at Lawrence and Gary Street, nine on the Second Street Corridor, and eight on the Third Street Corridor, three on the Prinsville Street Corridor, two at Calabrese Way and Taren Lane, six on the Eldorado Drive segment, four on Westwood Drive, and eight on San Miguel Street Corridor. So this project was also advertised in the San Jose Mercury News, city website. Bids opened October 15th. We received four bids, and Villalobos and Associates was the lowest responsive bidder. Here are four bids that we received, again, well below our engineer's estimate, which is why we have 15% contingency. The total bid with the contingency is about $410,000, and our funding sources, like I've mentioned, is Transportation Mobility Grant, vehicle registration fees, and gas taxes. registration fees, and gas taxes. Here, this slide here shows our budget amendment, bringing our total budget to about $410,000. And the public will be notified if they're having a curb ramp installed on their frontage. And we've reached out to, to some of these residents already. So staff's recommendation is to award a contract to Villa Lobos in the amount of $356,100, approving a project contingency of about $53,000, and approving a total project expenditure of $410,000, and to amend the adopted budget by $169,515. With that, any questions?
Thank you. Councilmember Armandares has a question.
Thank you. Can you detail for me? It, it says that these locations were selected based on feedback from residents. Can you tell me what kind of outreach was done and how the feedback was conducted?
Yeah, so I think the primary factor in selecting these locations was that there was no curb ramps there. So you had sidewalks at curb returns without a, a ramp. So that was the most important factor. And then another factor was where there was no ADA compliant ramps. And as far as the feedback, I, besides, you know, at our standard CIP, public hearing meetings, unfortunately, I don't have some of those details since I've, you know, I've been with the city for about eight weeks. So I personally wasn't involved in any specific outreach that we have, that we may have done for these specific projects.
So there's, it says feedback from residents. Was it called in from call? I mean, who could be familiar with that information?
Yeah, normally, we get, we get input from the public if, you know, if the, if the sidewalk is lifting or cracking. You know, we do keep an inventory of all the complaints we get from the public. You know, residents and, and the public, yes, we, we do keep an inventory of all those complaints.
And was that inventory used? Because I'm, I'm noticing that all of these addresses are, are west of Wren, right? And the previous ones, because they were CDG, CDBG-specific, CBDG-specific, they were on the east side or for, where some of them were. But none here are. And so I'm concerned about how we used that inventory and how these were prioritized because there's, you know, I, I think the percentage of houses on, on the east side of town are, is even higher, right? In, in terms of those that don't have these, these curb ramps.
Yeah, and I think-
And terrible sidewalks.
Yes, and I think these two projects were coordinated together. So I think because we knew that we had to spend CDB jump, CDBG funding, fund project, ramps on, you know, specific areas. So I think staff may have selected other ramps that weren't eligible for CDBG funds to kind of coordinate the two projects together. And then I'm not sure, you know, in past years, where these ramps were, have been located. But yeah, the idea would be that we're updating these ramps in multiple areas throughout the city. But, I mean, I, I don't know what else, you know, if, if that helps, you know, answer your-
I know you're, you're not familiar because you're new, you're newly onboard. So I appreciate your effort. But I do think that there has to be a, a way to measure, like, the severity of, of the damaged sidewalks, how long a address has been on the inventory when we decide how we're going to prioritize these projects. So thank you for your-
I could help with that a little bit, Councilmember Armandares. The sidewalks are a completely different project because those are the responsibility of the property owner. So we don't prioritize those in essence. But over the course of numerous years, we have picked different segments of the city to replace all the curb ramps. And as you can see, they're blocked together. So we've done numerous on the east side, the west side. We rotate through. We're required to do a certain number of CDB sites, which typically are on the east side.
Yeah.
So I don't have the exact data for you, but it is deliberate, and it, it is looked at where the money is and where you can get the most use for the, the dollars we have.
Thank you for the information. Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. And just, just a comment for those that don't know. It's great to see these large contracts going to a Gilroy company here. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other council member questions. Does anybody from the public wish to speak?
No public comment.
Okay, closing public comment and bringing this back to council. See if anybody wants to-
So move.
I'll second.
Okay. So again, we have four different motions here, if that's, if all four are included. Okay, to award the contract, to approve the contingency, to approve the total expenditure, and to authorize the city administrator to execute it.
Councilmember Bracco?
Wait, was there, was there something-
Was there also a budget amendment, or did we cover that?
It's in the same motion? It is in the motion. To adopt the resolution amending the budget.
Correct, right. And execute the contract, right. So it's, and to adopt a resolution. Okay, right. Yep.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes, that passes unanimously, and we move on to 7.3, award a contract to ELS Architecture and Urban Design for a Civic Center Master Plan Consultant Services in the amount of $749,899. This has been something we've discussed for quite some time. Nice to see this come to at least this point. Bryce Atkins will be giving us this report.
Good evening, Mayor, council. So a little background, the current Civic Center Master Plan was adopted back in 2002, which makes it about 20, roughly 22 years old. The existing facilities are aging with a lot of repair and, and high maintenance costs, and some are underutilized due to the condition. Wheeler specifically is a great example of that. We also have on the other side an increasing service demand for public facilities. Specifically, council received multiple requests, multiple public comment sessions of members asking for a community or youth center to be deployed. So council appropriated in the last budget cycle $750,000 to develop a new Civic Center Master Plan. Staff issued the RFP in September of 2024. The city received two proposals. So on the screen here, ELS Architecture, Urban Design, and Group Four Architecture. Although very close in scoring, per the comments from the viewers, ELS included environmental work, whereas Group Four had it as a separate item outside of the contract. This would result also in additional time and cost above the quoted amount and could further impact their timeline for completion. So staff has, the committee is recommending ELS Architecture, Urban Design. We did receive, as mentioned, two proposals. The lowest middle of the numbers are likely due to preclusion from engineering design on future projects for Civic Center. The contract is to take the project all the way from conception all the way to completion of the project, which makes them essentially acting as, as city staff in that consultant capacity. So it precludes anybody from doing this plan from actually providing for engineer, engineered work on those projects. Each proposal featured several subconsultants in their realms of finance, land use planning, engineering, other disciplines. The recommended proposal has 12 subconsultants in addition to the main consultant. Several of these have existing civic Gilroy experience, multiple in land use planning and engineering. Timing is a big factor in the award. We are looking to be prepared for the 2026 election to grant council the possibility of bond financing at that election. If missed, the next opportunity would be two years later in 2028. The project timeline is tight, but we have two key deadlines in the project schedule proposed. CEQA certification by council in the second meeting in May of 2026, followed by master plan adoption by council in the first meeting of June 2026. There are multiple key deliverables throughout the project. I'm going to pull a few of those here. A current conditions assessment would be completed by January 2025. Needs assessment would follow on at February of 2025 for completion. And then master plan design would begin at that point, ending in December 2025. That process has multiple input points for community, for council, planning commission, and city staff. Two visioning studies with the city council will lead off in February through April. Five community engagement workshops would then follow on, April through August of 2025. And then closing with three sessions with the draft master plan with council, September through November of 2025. Once that conceptual plan is put together, project financing and environmental work would then commence at that point, each ending in March and May respectively. Fiscal impact is $749,000, $749,899. This is from the Public Facilities Impact Fee Fund. So there's no impact to the general fund from this project. Council again appropriated this, this project back for the fiscal year '24. And then mid-cycle budget review and adjustments item later on this agenda would be moving those funds in fiscal year '25. So public outreach, it was, it was included in the budget discussions back in May of 2023. The project proposes a collaborative approach with community stakeholders and staff, and includes multiple sessions for public input from the, from the city and as well as the community as a whole. So recommendations for council to award a contract to ELS Architecture and Urban Design in the amount of $749,899, and authorize the city administrator to execute the agreement and all other related documents. That completes the presentation.
Thank you, Bryce. Okay, before I go to any questions, I want to make sure that at least the public understands that this is not awarding a contract for someone to do the design, even though the name of the company is Urban Design. This is for a consultant who will simply gather, organize, and analyze data to formulate a vision for this Civic Center, for the council and the public to consider and begin moving forward on how they want to design what this could be. So that's, I just wanted to make sure that that's clear with everybody. Okay, Councilmember Bracco?
Bryce, what do you estimate the time involved with this, that they're going to have in it?
The consultants? It's pretty aggressive. They have, oh, there's a term hours, but it's, it's, it's flipped through the, through the delivery, sorry, through the delivery process. We're looking at a total of, we're looking at 1,500 hours mixed to different consultants.
Okay, seeing no other questions from the council, I'd like to ask if we have anyone from the public who wants to speak?
No public comment.
No public comment, okay.
Do you have a question?
Okay, closing public comment. And Councilmember Armandares?
I don't see a plan in there for their community outreach. Can you, are you familiar with what kind of outreach they're going to do in the community?
Yeah, so it's a mixture of, there's required to have five public meetings in various locations throughout the city. There's English and Spanish. They'll be doing online surveys, but at the same time having paper surveys as well. They'll be integrated into the results that will become for council. The outreach is, is generally getting opinion, but at the same time, the plan is to have the, the public meetings in a series. So have one meeting, take back the comments, review, make tweaks and adjustments, and seek further clarification at each meeting.
And the paper surveys will be mailed out, or is there a plan for dissemination and, like, one-on-one canvassing?
Yeah, so they're, they're looking at a couple of different options at this point. One is, is mailed as an option. The other is using either local community organizations or partners working with the city, really identify the best possible route to get the paper copies out and distributed.
Thank you. I have one last question. Well, one question. Do you know if they, this consultant will be provided with the 2019 study that we did and paid for for, granted, that was just for recreation things, but is that going to be made part of what they will have access to?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great.
That, the older Civic Center Master Plan, any other documents and planning items have been done for this area or other needs for the city.
Great. Okay, thank you. Okay, motion by-
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bracco and seconded by Councilmember Armandares to, and this has two, to award a contract to ELS Architecture and Urban Design in the amount of $749,899, and authorize the city administrator to execute the agreement and all other related documents.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes, that passes unanimously. Okay, item eight is public hearings. We have none. Nine is unfinished business, none. Ten is introduction of new business. 10.1, receive a preliminary fiscal year '23, '24 year-end financial report and adopt a resolution amending fiscal year '24, '25 budget to appropriate mid-cycle budgetary adjustments. Harjo?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council and the community. Harjo Tsanga, the Finance Director with the City of Gilroy. Some background, the current biennial budget, which is the fiscal year '24 and '25, was adopted back in June of 2023. Since then, we've been coming before the council with quarterly financial updates. And then today we are before you to present the preliminary fiscal year '24 year-end financials, as well as present mid-cycle budget adjustments that are recommended for fiscal year '25. With respect to the general fund overall, general fund revenues exceeded budget, came in at 68.1 with a budget of 66.4. Primarily, our tax revenues, with respect to sales tax, we, as soon as we had adopted the budget, we knew our sales tax revenue forecast was going to come in lower for both fiscal year '24 and '25. For '24, we were originally anticipating about a million-dollar shortfall. The actuals came in roughly about $700,000 under. Property tax, again, came in right at budget. Utility user tax came in right at budget, as well as franchise tax. Well, with respect to our transient occupancy tax, which is our TOT, hotel tax, also known, it did come in a little under budget of about $400,000. The primary reason was essentially decrease in occupancies, as well as decrease in the rate of average daily rates that's assessed during the fiscal year as compared to prior years. So a combination of both. With respect to the business licenses, we came in a little bit higher, a couple hundred thousand dollars. That's primarily the discovery and clients, compliance effort that's underway to bring our non-compliant businesses into, into compliance to that effort. In the area of other general fund revenues, this includes our departmental service charge, so user fees and things of that nature, as well as any intergovernmental revenues, fines, and things of that nature. This category, again, came in at 15.3 with a budget of 12.7. The increases were primarily, you'll recall, during the year Gilroy Gardens made their lease payments. So that was about $700,000. That was one-time money, but multiple years catch-up payments. And then on the investment side, we, we did fairly well than what we had budgeted for in generating investment interest. That was about $800,000. So again, in total, 68.1 versus the budget of 66.4. On the expenditure side, we came in under budget, or we had a budget of $74.8 million, and our actuals, including outstanding incumbences, were about $73 million. The overages that you see there in the other governmental's are primarily just operational costs related to upkeeping of the aging facilities and then increases in electricity charges and things of that nature. With respect to the non-general funds, these are reported at the fund type. So we have, you know, 60-plus funds. Overall, within the, the non-general fund categories, we had a budget of 96.1. Our actual revenues were 83.4, or about 87% of the budget. And then with respect to, I'll just highlight again, you know, if you have any specific questions on each fund type categories, we can, we can dive in. But really, the one I'd like to highlight is the capital development. It seems like it's significantly lower than budget, but that's primarily due because when we adopted the budget, we were anticipating to issue the bonds for the Gilroy Ice Center project. It's a multi-year project. We didn't get to do that in '24, so we'll go ahead and embark on that. So the budget is there, but the actuals obviously didn't materialize. So that's, that's a primary difference. And you'll see the same thing on the expenditure side for capital and development fund types as well. So with respect to the non-general fund expenditures, again, we had 139.3 budget across all those non-general fund types. And then we came in about 100.9 million of actuals. Again, highlighting the capital development, that's primarily related to the Gilroy Ice Center. The expenditure did not materialize as well. And then primarily all others, basically the savings were capital outlay-related projects. So projects that were on the books for '24, and you'll see some of these projects that are now being carried forward as part of the mid-cycle process. So that's, that's a high-level report there. With respect to the budget adjustments, so we have all funds total, revenue adjustments of net revenue adjustments of about $155,000. And then our expenditures are about- and then our expenditures are about sixteen million dollars. So majority of these adjustments across all these funds are carryforwards, again, from projects or initiatives that the city council approved as part of the adopted budget, which were not commenced or otherwise encumbered. So meaning we weren't able to get into contract, contracts where those funds were now encumbered for those specific purposes during the fiscal year. Included with the staff report and the resolution is the itemized list, which goes into details of the descriptions for each of those at the department level as well as the fund level. That's the exhibit A. And then I'm happy to, again, if you have any questions, we can, we can dive into any specific items there, so. We also included additional other financial updates for you. One of the notable ones is always, we like to keep a pulse on our pensions, so CalPERS pensions, especially the unfunded accrued liabilities. Are, they did report in July their preliminary results. So what we have before you here on this slide is just how the city's unfunded accrued liabilities have been for the last couple of years. So we had about a hundred and eleven million dollars in fiscal year twenty-two. In fiscal year twenty-three, we had a return of six point one percent. CalPERS target rate of return is six point eight. So obviously, they came in a little bit under, and then accumulated from prior years is any kind of negative impact returns that we had. So those all get amortized. So in fiscal year twenty-three, our UAL was about a hundred and seventeen million. More recently, July, two thousand and twenty-four, CalPERS reported their prelim, returns of nine point three. Again, this is a higher than their anticipated or budgeted rate of return, which is a six point eight, and that is projected to decrease our unfunded liability by about seven million dollars, back to about a hundred and eleven. Council has taken, again, prudent steps in the recent years to manage those unfunded liabilities, especially by establishing a section one fifteen trust, and then adopting a funding policy annually. We contribute to these, this trust. So that trust as of September has roughly about four million dollars with a investment rate of return of twenty-one percent over the past year. So certainly, the, the purpose of setting aside monies is to manage, you have a little bit more control over how those assets are invested. So that seems to be paying dividends, so happy to report that. Here is a snapshot of our current CalPERS unfunded liability payments, starting from two thousand and twenty-five going all the way up to two thousand and forty-three. Really, given that we are still seeing increases to the annual UAL payments, we're recommending, again, you know, stay the course, continue to grow the pension trust, and then, you know, yield additional investment earnings. And then we'll get into a position which we were hoping this would be, what would materialize is you get to start leveraging the pension trust. So we're anticipating if had we not done that, so the blue bars are essentially the UAL payments for the respective years. The orange dash line is us beginning to leverage, basically draw from the pension trust, starting approximately in fiscal year twenty-seven, some monies to pay for that UAL payment. So what we're anticipating is we'll withdraw anywhere from, you know, half a million dollars up to a million to two million dollars in a given year. And then we'll deplete the pension trust just to kind of bite off that peak, if you will. So we'll level off those payments, and then they'll approximately, again, yield in about two million dollars of savings. So again, this is just a reminder that, you know, we're, we've been investing, putting away monies. It seems to appear that it is working, and then we'll be in a position soon. Again, all things remaining, there's no major deviations, and CalPERS doesn't have any, you know, significant downturns. But if we stay the course, we should be able to reap the benefits in the future. The other financial update is regarding the property tax, our favorite subject, access ERAF, which is Access Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund. We previously reported to council that there were some challenges to how the county calculates the ERAF calculation. One of the matters was resolved, the state controllers matter regarding the review of the calculation is, however, still pending. We received an update from the county just this month that it is likely going to extend into the calendar year two thousand and twenty-five with a potential resolution by summer of two thousand and twenty-five. Although the state controllers matter, they have asserted that it will be retroactive, going back to fiscal year twenty-one. We still believe the best-case scenario is, is going to be the outcome, which will be any adjustments to the calculation will be on a going-forward basis. Because this is now going to be in summer of two thousand and twenty-five, we anticipate we will be done with fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. So therefore, we're not budgeting to have that, you know, about four hundred thousand dollars of loss. However, in future years, we're still continuing to kind of forecast that. So that's the, that's the update on that front. And then with that, the recommendations before you are to receive the report, approve the pension and OPEC section one fifteen trust contributions. This is part of the council's adopted policies for both trusts. And last but not least is the adopting the resolution to amend the fiscal year twenty-five budget to appropriate the mid-cycle adjustments that are outlined on the exhibit A. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you, Harjo. Can you go back to that slide with the bars? Yeah, and this, what this shows is that everything we did to fund the pension trust is going to make it so that in these years, when those blue bars are above the red dotted line, we're not going to feel it as much, right?
Yes.
Because we put that money into the trust. So I sure hope that that policy continues and everybody can appreciate what that does, what that does for us in the years when things get higher, which is what we have to plan for. Because you never know what the investments are going to do, and the defined benefit that we have to pay out doesn't change, no matter what. Yeah, all right, thank you. Councilmembers, any questions? No? Anybody from the public wanting to speak on this? Okay, then this, does this require a motion? It does, yes.
Second.
Okay, motion made by, you guys are always letting the same two people do the motions, all right? Motion made by councilmember Armandares and seconded by councilmember Tovar to approve an agreement with, no, to, to approve the resolution, right, amending, right, sorry, approve the, to adopt a resolution, amending the fiscal year twenty-five budget to appropriate mid-cycle budget adjustments, and also to approve the pension and other post-employment benefits section one fifteen trust contributions pursuant to council adopted policies.
And receive the report just between the two.
Okay, not on mine, but okay, and to receive the report. All right.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley.
Yes, yay, all right, that one passed unanimously. Okay, ten point two is adoption of a resolution approving and authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with applicant Gilroy Logistics LLC for nine fifty-one through nine eighty-one, Rens Lane Agricultural Mitigation. Sharon Goey is going to give us this report.
This is all right, okay, yes. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the community. What we have before you tonight is the agricultural mitigation for the Rens Lane project. Just for background, the city adopted an agricultural mitigation policy in two thousand and four and revised in two thousand and sixteen. The intent of the policy is to enable the continued viability of agriculture and agri-tourism in Gilroy. In two thousand and twenty, the city council approved and provided funding to the Land Trust of Santa Clara Valley to acquire this one hundred and eight point four acre agricultural conservation easement on the Van Dyke Ranch. Under this mitigation policy, the ag conservation easement could serve as agricultural mitigation for the development of one hundred and eight point four acres. Now, as for the Rens Lane project, in two thousand and twenty-two, the applicant submitted an application to construct two multi-tenant buildings, industrial buildings, that totaled about two hundred and six thousand square feet, and their site is twelve point eight acres. The project applicant obtained their planning entitlements in two thousand and twenty-three. And this project is required to comply with the city's mitigation policy because the site was considered prime farmland. Under the policy, the applicant must either purchase an equal amount of suitable agricultural land in a one-to-one ratio, or purchase development rights to that same amount of land. And the applicant has been working with some land brokers and the land trust. They have not identified sites that are comparable to the site, to their project site that meet the criteria of the ag mitigation policy. The few agricultural sites are available in excess of fifty to one hundred acres. So they just haven't found the right-sized property that fits the one-to-one ratio. So applicant has approached the city and asked the city for permission to use twelve point eight acres out of the one hundred and eight point four acre agricultural conservation easement as agricultural mitigation for their project. This will leave the city with ninety-five point six acres remaining of mitigation for the sports park, and the sports park size is about seventy-eight point five acres. So when that's fully developed, that will still leave the city with seventeen acres. And the applicant is willing to pay the appraised value of the twelve point eight acres of agricultural conservation easement, plus their share of the stewardship fee that the city had paid to the land trust for the management of that conservation easement. So the table there, that's the timing of the payment versus the payment amount. If it's not paid on or prior to June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, if it's the following year, that adds another three percent on top of that, that's what they have agreed to. And then if it is until June, two thousand and twenty-six, that becomes six percent on top of the amount. And the agreement is set to expire in June of two thousand and twenty-six unless extended in writing by both parties. And one important part of the agreement is that prior to issuance of the first building permit, the payment must be received. And the city will accept this payment as meeting the agricultural mitigation policy requirements for their project. The two thousand and twenty agricultural conservation easement for the one hundred and eight acres, that was primarily paid, primarily paid for by the city's Public Facilities Impact Fund. So staff's recommendation is for this payment to be deposited back to that same fund. So here's staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution to approve an agreement with Gilroy Logistics LLC, that's the applicant, to utilize twelve point eight acres of the conservation easement that the city caused to be purchased on the Van Dyke property to satisfy compliance with the City of Gilroy's agricultural mitigation policy and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Thank you very much, and the applicant's here as well.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. All right, councilmembers, any questions? Seeing none, public?
No public comment.
All right, closing public comment, coming back to council for a motion to adopt a resolution. Okay, made by councilmember Klein. Seconded by councilmember Bracco to adopt a resolution to approve an agreement with Gilroy Logistics LLC to utilize twelve point eight acres of the conservation easement that the city caused to be purchased on the Van Dyke property to satisfy compliance with the City of Gilroy's ag mitigation policy and authorize the city administrator to execute the agreement.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Mayor Blankley?
Yes, passes unanimously. All right, moving on to future council-initiated items, we have none, city administrators' reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only report I have is the Santa Teresa Fire Station update. I have two items concerning that. Myself and our city engineer, Daniel Pedelia, Pedelia was, were invited by the city of Morgan Hill last Tuesday to tour their, their fire station under construction. They are about another three or four months away from completing their fire station. It is a good model for us to use because of the size and the cost, and so we'll be able to utilize some of their experience and some of their work they've already done as we get ready to finish the design on ours and begin construction. The second part related is that we are moving through escrow with the fire station. We expect to return on December ninth with the acceptance of the parcel, and we expect to close escrow on the first part of the agreement with Glenlaw on December eighteenth. So once we accept the land, we are ready to go, and we'll be looking to finalize design early two thousand and twenty-six with construction commencing in two thousand and twenty-six. That concludes my report, thank you.
Two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five?
Whoa.
I think you meant two thousand and twenty-five.
Two thousand and twenty-five.
Yeah. Okay, city attorneys' reports?
No report.
Okay, we have no closed session, so with that, we are adjourned at seven oh five PM.